All right, are we all ready?
Okay, we're on.
Okay, very good. Welcome, everybody, to the May 11th Board of Education meeting. I'm going to need a motion to begin our meeting. Can I get a motion? And I think I saw Christine as the second.
Who was the initial?
Was it Michelle?
Michelle.
Okay, Michelle and Christine, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. All right, then, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice-
We're not getting any better at that.
I don't know.
It actually sounded better than the last time.
I thought it was a little better. Okay, everybody. So for approvals tonight, we have the Board of Education meeting minutes and transcription of April 28, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of April 28?
Motion from Tom.
Motion from Tom. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thanks very much. That's helpful when you say your names, too. Okay, so we have an FYI of budget appropriation report. Thank you, for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 4/30/2020. We also have an FYI of budget transfers, and FYI of extracurricular quarterly reports as of 3/31/2020, and FYI of revenue status reports as of 4/30/2020. And that brings us to the Treasurer's Report for March 2020. It is upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board approves the Treasurer's Report for March 2020. Can I get a motion?
Motion from Linda.
And a second?
Christine.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, and that brings us down to the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the warrants certified for 22/2020 and 5/6/2020. Can I get a motion?
Michelle.
Motion from, second from Tom.
Very good. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. All right, that brings us to communications and announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to say?
I do. As the parent of a senior, I just want to thank everyone for Saturday's special treat. It was really, it was just wonderful for all the seniors and their families. Parents, I think, equally touched, and neighbors of seniors and parents. And so we're proudly displaying our sign and her Blue Devil sticker, which is a nice added touch, is on her laptop. So thanks for the special, yes.
I very rarely have a chance to drive through town and simply lean on an air horn. For those that didn't appreciate it, I apologize.
I guess if you had a napping baby, maybe not so much.
Right, but everybody else, I think, pretty much thought it was a joyous occasion and poured out onto the streets to see it. I wish somebody had been on my block.
I just wanted to, a day late, wish all the Huntington mothers Happy Mother's Day. All those that act as mothers, instead of mothers, in place of mothers, want to be mothers, all those people. And I just think they're pulling triple, quadruple duty right now, and so it's especially appreciated. And I wanted to also note that I wanted to thank all the teachers in the secondary schools for the progress reports. It was, even though they weren't the way they normally are, it was like this little bit of normalcy, sort of, to get a progress report.
Yeah, it was.
And, like, you know, in addition to, of course, all of the phone calls that they've been making and, you know, in person with the students and calling the parents. And I'm lucky because I get to be my son's one-on-one, so I'm on with teachers all day long, so I get to see their faces and talk to them about real things, so that's always nice. But I just wanted to say that it was appreciated to have that little bit of regular school getting a progress report, so.
I'll chime in, I think-
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the teachers, the parents, and the administration for making this bizarre episode in everyone's life, a memorable experience for our graduating class. Really difficult times. Even Mr. Kuzak's blue hair was very, a very nice touch. I know that it's not normal what we're going through, but we're doing everything we can to make it as memorable as possible. And I just want to thank everybody for their efforts.
Jen, I have something. Even though we didn't get to do the things that we normally do during Teacher Appreciation Week, I wanted to acknowledge our teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think all of our schools did some things that they could virtually to acknowledge, especially right now, the extraordinary efforts of our teachers. So I'd like to acknowledge them for teacher appreciation.
Very nice. They certainly are deserving every last one of them. Okay, if nobody has anything else, I think Jim, you probably want to talk about your experience with the seniors, I'm guessing?
I think you've all touched upon it very nicely. It was it was really emotional. It was pandemic or no pandemic. It was one of the best days I've had in a long time. And we're committed to doing as much as we can for these kids. They've been short-changed. This is a fantastic group. They deserve, they've earned a heck of a lot more than this. But to have that one day to do what we did was terrific. I'd like to thank Mr. Kusak and the staff at the high school. Judy Jamison, Terry Moreno, and Nicole Sandvik were the parent leaders of this this really well-thought-out event. I had the opportunity to ride shotgun with Terry on Saturday. She was actually the one leaning on the air horn. But we had such fun and to see the smiles on these kids' faces and their parents and their siblings and the people in the neighborhoods that we drove through. There were 32 routes, all had anywhere from 25 to 35 or so seniors. And it was, it was something. It really was. And they earned it, and we love them to death, and I hope they know that. And just some of the other things that I'm sure are on their minds in terms of graduation and end-of-year events. You know, we're kind of in a holding pattern, and I know I've said this before, so forgive me. You know, as a superintendent, as administrators, we're always thinking as far ahead as we can. But with this situation, as Xavier pointed out, it's very unique, and in some respects, we have to run the mile we're in. And we'd like to do something live. We'd like to have the kids on site. We have to wait to determine or to figure out if, A, we're permitted to do that, and B, how we can do it safely. So if there's a way, we'll find it. If not, we're going to do the next best thing. But we have not altered our plans other than pushing it back so that we can, you know, we can really think this through carefully. We're going to give them the best experience that we possibly can. And I know there are no answers yet, but we'll provide them as soon as we can. I know there are a lot of folks that are interested in picking things up, and we're going to make accommodations to package up belongings or something of that nature and make sure that kids get their things. That includes the high school seniors. You know, like I said, we've got to make makeshift some things through here, and we're going to do the best we can to make sure that everybody gets what they should be getting at the end of the year to the best of our abilities. It's going to be a challenge, but we are, I have a terrific team here. That's administrators, teachers, staff, support staff. Every unit in this district is stepping up here, and I've said it before and I'll say it again. I can't say enough about these folks. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else right now. We'll talk budget shortly, and I'll highlight some of the challenges that we face there. The latest executive order, obviously, close schools for the duration of the year or the remainder of the year, and set the budget vote on June 9 in an absentee ballot-type fashion, which presents all kinds of challenges for us and for everyone, for that matter. It's not what we'd like, but at this point, we have no choice to do what we need to do. Advanced placement exams started today. Kids are taking them at home, online, in abbreviated fashion, as set by the College Board. We have our kids all set here in terms of hardware and infrastructure. My concern for kids that maybe not here, but elsewhere, don't have access to what they need to complete these exams. So there's equity issues that flow through districts when technology is not where it should be or where things get in the way of them doing what they need to do. So that is something that has been a topic of discussion at the local, state, and even the national levels at this point. And the last thing I'll mention-
Can I ask a question about that?
What's that?
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
I had heard, I don't want to say where, because it's a place you hate. It's the only place we have right now. That there were some issues with the AP, not our district's AP exams, but in general across the nation, that kids had trouble submitting their actual answers. Have you heard anything like that?
I have not.
Okay.
If it happened here, I imagine I would have heard it.
It could have been anywhere in the country. This was like a national thing.
Well, the problem with this, and one of the things that I had discussed with my colleagues, is it's a very rigid timeframe. You've got to complete the exams at X time. So you have some kids taking these exams at 6:00 in the morning, one part of the country, one part of the world, and others taking them at midnight. There's no wiggle room or give here, and I don't-
Right.
You know, can you imagine being a teenager taking an exam at midnight or at 6:00 in the morning? I don't know which is worse or better.
Right.
But there are issues with this, and, you know, I know nothing's ideal, and I'm not criticizing the way things had or are being done, but-
But just on that note-
Go ahead.
I was going to say that I know that Jeanette has said this 1,000 times to everyone who's taken the AP exams, but just in case, I'll say it again. Go to the email that you've gotten about 10 times now and practice submitting. Your number, making sure your hardware works, you're signed on right, you know how to get in, and practice it, and hit submit, all the way through to hit submit. And then you'll, at least you'll know the routine on the day, and it's just one less thing to be worried or nervous about, and you can just check that off your list, so.
And she has been very diligent with that.
Oh, she's been great.
That doesn't mean that people listen.
She's doing a terrific job.
Right. No, you're right about that, Christine. But she has, she's been great getting information to the families. Very, very helpful.
All right, so the other major topic of discussion, and this is my Suffolk County Superior Executive Monday Executive Board meeting, with the county trying to plan for reopening. Now, I'm not sure exactly what role the county would play, but-
Somebody's unmuted, and it's-
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
All should be muted. Okay. There is a reopening task force. There's the reimagining education or reimagining New York initiative that the governor threw out there one morning without really thinking that through and heard about it the next day. There is a group that is on that task force or ad hoc committee, whatever they want to call it. There are no downstate educators or really downstate people embedded in that process, and that's something we're trying to force our way into at this point. And that goes along with the reopening task force. There's going to be a lot of challenges regardless of what date is set for school reopening, whether it be summer, fall, or somewhere in between. There's a lot of things that are going to have to be considered and done very carefully to make sure that we can do what we need to do in the safest manner possible. I look forward to a time when we can get back to some of the things that we were doing at the beginning of March. It's going to take some time to get there, and I think there are some things that are going to change indefinitely. But again, I ask for everyone's patience, because this is going to be an abbreviated but very careful planning process. And abbreviated, meaning a couple of months does not give us a great deal of time to plan for what we need to do, and basic order needs come first. Health and safety come before anything else. And this community has been beyond supportive, and we've tried to communicate in the most comprehensive manner from every level in this district on an ongoing basis, and that will certainly continue.
Other than geography, do you feel like the committee is diverse enough? Because I heard that specifically Special Ed, I don't know about the other subgroups, didn't feel represented.
There's a lot not represented there, and I'll say downstate in general was short-changed. There's a lot of upstate representation. I think there is one teacher and maybe one other from downstate.
I saw a parent, yeah. Anyway, we can nominate you. Get on there, Jim. String things out. I think I just heard him groan and then sigh.
You know, if they asked any of us, from a superintendent's perspective, there's, any one of us would be happy to do it, because we do need that, we do need that voice. There are challenges up in North Country, in New York State. They don't have the broadband access that we have down here. We have challenges down here that they don't have. We have population density that has caused a much, much more rapid, and I hopefully now, knock on wood on the downswing, a much more rapid spread of the virus and challenges that go along with that. But, you know, listen, I've mentioned this before. I have two 20-somethings in my house right now that are not used to being under the same roof. I'm not used to having either one of them under the same roof, and comes challenges when you can't get out of the house, and the patience sometimes wanes, and it leads people out at times when maybe we're not quite there yet. So just, you know, remind everybody to be careful, be safe, and follow the guidelines that are thrown out there. We want this to end as quickly as possible, but we also don't want it to come back.
No, we don't.
You know, we're going to keep pressing to do this right.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah?
At the last board meeting, we floated the idea of maybe summer school. Any thought to that or any furtherance of that idea?
The one thing I am waiting for there, the governor is supposed to, by the end of the month, give us some sort of guidance as to what we'll be allowed to do over the summer in or around our buildings, and that, a lot hinges on that. He seems to be delaying a lot of the educational decisions to the last minute. That's not necessarily helping us plan, but we're, you know, again, we've got to open over the summer in a manner that parents feel comfortable sending their kids, and, you know, safety first. But, yeah, there's going to be a lot of compensatory service and remediation needed. And, you know, a parent asked this morning about changing goals and what we're actually, where we're looking to be with specific children at the end of the year. And to be honest with you, one of the things that we'll need to do at the end of this is assess where kids are and what they've missed out on, and we're going to have to individualize our program as best we can. It's going to be a challenge. I think we have staff here that's, A, thoroughly cares about the kids and is talented and skilled enough to do that, but this is not going to be an overnight process. I do hope we can begin something over the summer though.
I agree. What I've heard from the Special Ed Department personally with regard to summer is just open-mindedness, so.
Absolutely.
And willing to figure, like, whenever we have guidance, to figure it out for each kid, so.
Kids should not be penalized for anything related to this, and that's, for the most part, everything at this point. And that's the message we've been trying to get across, and we've been trying to help parents who are in situations where you may have two parents who are essential workers that are not home and can't do the same things as other parents who can be home with their kids. And we've got to be as flexible as possible in terms of allowing the children to get their work done in the right way and providing the parents with the support that we can.
And even parents at our home have different schedules, you know, have different types of burdens on them working from home. Some can work any hours, some have to work the same hours their kids need to be learning, you know, so it's, yeah.
It's not, this has not been easy on anyone, but the flexibility here is absolutely critical. Okay, I think that's-
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That is going to bring us down to our items for discussion, which would be the budget, right?
Public commentary.
Oh, sorry, I skipped right over. It wasn't shown. All right, and we actually have quite a few people out there, so
All right, I have-
I think the same rules apply.
All right, you'll read the rules. I just want to remind that I have, I think everybody is muted, so I'm going to have to scroll down and look for, hit the thumbs up or the clap, whatever it is. I'll see you and I will unmute you. Okay, Jen, go ahead.
Okay, so the rules are that you should, if you have a question or a comment to make, that you would state your name and affiliation to the district. You have three minutes, and we ask that you don't use any personal student names or teacher names, and that you basically keep it to a general comment. And although we don't generally answer questions right away, you know, if you leave, obviously, we'll have your name. We can always get back to you. All right, anyone?
Okay. Hang on a second.
Jenny.
I'm just scrolling down.
Sure.
There's quite a few people here tonight. Thank you. All. I'm scrolling back up.
Nobody.
Give me a thumb. That's the only digit on the hand you're allowed to throw at me. Okay, I got nothing.
The cameras are off, so they could really do whatever they want. With their own fingers, I mean.
Yep.
I'm going to lost Jen. Okay.
Jen is gone.
Jen is gone.
Should I text her? I'll text her.
I'm going down one more time.
I have to text Jen anyway, so.
Sorry, guys. My internet connection in the other room was no good. Here I am, I'm back.
I was just texting you. Are you coming back?
Sorry about that.
I have nothing. If there is anybody who would like to later on, there's a second public commentary.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. All right. So that actually brings us to the first item for discussion and action, and that would be the revised board meeting calendar. You guys, I'm just going to shut the CV off. Good lord. Honestly. It's a whole new world. Okay, so there it is, everybody. I know we all had a chance to see it ahead of time. Jim, is there anything you want to say?
Well, you want to take the motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah, okay. So can I get a motion to approve the revised calendar?
Christine?
And a second? Second, Tom. Okay, now, does anybody have any questions or comments?
No. Just ugh.
Jim, I do have a question.
Yep.
How much is that going to cost us, this absentee ballot?
Actually, excellent question. That absentee ballot process is probably going to cost us in the area of about $40,000, maybe even more, depending on how the process of labeling each one of those envelopes plays out. So once again, this is a process that was not really well-considered in terms of the fiscal difficulties that districts are already facing. It just added one more piece to that.
And how much is the library chipping in to it?
We're going to request that, because they have one of four items on the ballot. So for those that don't recognize this, typically, the library vote is separate from the school district vote. The executive order included an accommodation for the library to participate in the same process with the school district, so we will ask them for 25% of the cost.
Okay. I have another question about the library vote, and I don't know if you know, but I read in their email, the library email that came to me today about voting on their vote and encouraging everybody to vote for their trustee on their, their uncontested trustee on the ballot. They said they don't need to put up their budget because they're not asking for more money. That's how it works.
That's correct.
If we didn't ask for more money, would we have to have a vote?
No.
Oh, I did not know that. Okay.
Hey, Jim, just one other quick thing. On the tabulation side, how does that work? Is they're all going to be coming in manually filled out? We'll have, we'll have election workers here physically distanced, opening and counting. And we'll have an election chairperson. It's going to work somewhat like a regular vote would, but it would be all absentee ballot-based. There'll be no machine counts.
Well, that's, I think, Tom, your question goes to how are they tabulated, right? Because right now, we have devices tabulating for it. Are you going to have individuals, I guess, my question to follow on, Tom, is, you know, what kind of checks do we have in place? Are each, you know, collection of ballots can be voted, counted by how many different people?
We're going to have multiple people checking ballots. We're going to have a, almost like an assembly line in place to do this, and multiple assembly lines, if that makes any sense. But it, you know, honestly, we do expect that there'll be potentially more ballots coming in, and we receive votes on a typical election day. So we're going to have to plan accordingly. So I'm going to have to have a number of bodies here on June 9 in different places, but centrally located, probably spread out throughout a gymnasium.
And when do people have to register by to be able to get an absentee ballot?
That is an excellent question.
I thought maybe Joanne might know.
Okay, Joanne, if you want to chime in with that date, I know we've got to, we've got to mail these by the 29th. I'm sorry, Joanne?
May 26?
26.
Through the DMV website.
Okay. We might want to amend this timeline to include that.
That's actually a good idea, for sure. It's in the postpart. That's going to get sent out.
Right, but just to have it available now on the website may help. So just remind, and I'll amend this and put that up.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, so did anybody have any additional questions or comments about this revised calendar? Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
In italics are the added items. So May 18 was not a meeting date originally. Now it will be the date of budget adoption. June 1 is now the budget hearing date, and the budget vote election via absentee ballot ballots would have to be turned in, received by 5:00 PM on June 9.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, so on to our second item for discussion and action, and that is the 2020-2021 Budget Revenue Update and Proposal. We're all ears.
Okay, can everybody see that? Is it cheering?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. You're with me here, because I'm working with three screens.
I can't even manage one screen.
I'm either, this is either a board meeting night or I'm about to land a plane. Okay.
Back to Linda.
She took her headset off. I'm having a conchicle before me.
I'm filling in.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so there are two sections to this presentation. The first addresses revenue. We stopped our presentations in their tracks back in, back at the end of March after the initial staffing curriculum instruction presentation, because to put revenue on the table at that point didn't make any sense, because the numbers we had, we knew were not going to be realistic or accurate. So I will say that I can't, there are no transitions here. I'm trying to throw everything at you at once, so you can at least look at it. We still don't have updated revenue numbers from the state, so we're flying blind to a certain degree here. But just some reminders, the early April state aid update, which we do not believe is going to be useful to us at this point, actually added a small fraction of a percent statewide to what we're receiving currently in 1920. Foundation aid was made flat at that point, so whatever we received for this year is going to be carried over in terms of the dollar amount to 2021. And then they actually took over a billion out, but at the same time, put it back in in the form of a pandemic adjustment. And that is part of the prior federal stimulus package that was supposed to be in New York, New York and other states, a dollar-for-dollar match reduction and addition. So technically, at that point, the federal government restored every dollar that was taken by New York State. Now, I don't, I don't know exactly how this was supposed to play out or how it's playing out in other states, but it wasn't necessarily supposed to be an offset. It could have been something that was added, but New York chose to do it in this manner. So they took X dollars in state aid, and they put X dollars back in the form of this federal pandemic adjustment. It's not enough. That's why there's a push out there to get stimulus package, CARES package, federal relief stimulus relief package number four, because we're going to be among every New York State district in a hole at the end of this. And probably for some time, my biggest concern is not necessarily 2021, because there's a delay in terms of how property taxes impact the situation. This may take a little bit longer to dig out of the hole, and it may get worse before it gets better. But as of early April, based on the first state aid run following all this, we were down about 256,000, almost 256,000 in state aid. So this is old news at this point. I also shared with the board that there were mechanisms put into the process that allowed for further- I also shared with the board that there were mechanisms put into the process that allowed for further state aid adjustments, and that first measurement period, there are four measurement periods during which, if revenues don't meet state targets, the governor gave the Division of Budget the authority to adjust aid allocations further in a downward manner, if necessary. The first measurement period ended on April 30th, we still have not received any update or any further state aid run from the governors, from the state, anywhere in the state for that matter, so we don't know exactly what our aid is going to look like. So we have estimated, and I'll show you what that looks like very shortly. But please note that there are three additional measurement periods ending June 30th, December 31, and March 31. At any of those times, further adjustments can be made to state aid, and those could be potentially damaging, devastating, decimating, if they are in a downward direction, and may leave certain districts in a position where they've got to make adjustments mid-year. I experienced that years ago, as an early administrative career, maybe even during my teaching career, it was not a pleasant experience, and my hope is we can get through it without something damaging it mid-year. But we do anticipate that when those numbers come out, we are going to lose state aid beyond what I showed in the previous slide. Okay, we talked about this before, based on Xavier's question, there is a new 2021 budget timeline, the vote was adjourned until Tuesday, June 9th, absentee ballot adoption on Monday, the 18th, budget hearing rescheduled for Monday, June 1st. And again, that Tuesday, June 9th date, we would have to have the ballots in hand by 5:00 PM that day. Okay, so this is basically what we did, not to go through every number here, but I'm gonna just describe the columns, and you can look at them, should be nice and large on the screen. Aid category, and the board knows this, that the only real discretionary category in this slide, on this slide, is foundation aid. It is there for what we choose to use it for. The other aids are expense-based, so if you see reductions, you'll notice, I'll explain some of them, but the reductions are there because we're not spending as much in that category. So I'll go column and then row very quickly. Aid categories are listed, 1920 is actual, that's what we're receiving in each one of those categories, for the most part. 2021 initial state aid run in January. If the pandemic had never occurred, that's what our aid package would have looked like. Then it happened, the enacted state budget was two months later. That first slide, which described what it looked like in early April, that's this column right here. Can you see my cursor?
Yes.
We took that column, and in certain categories, i.e. foundation aid, we reduced it by 15%, carefully selected so that it made sense. We expect anywhere from 10% to 20%, and if it ends up being 20%, we believe we can absorb that with some other area, some other look fours in certain areas. But we think that was a responsible place to put it at this point. What you're seeing here, and this could be framed in a number of different ways, but what I'm showing you is a change from what it looked like in happier times, what it looks like here, that difference and the percent difference. So we reduce state aid 15%, foundation aid 15%, it shows here as 17.3%. If we had compared this column to this column, that's your 15% right there. But it gives you a sense of some of the issues that we're gonna have here. Transportation aid, we're anticipating it's gonna be down over a million, why? We're not using buses right now. And that applies in much smaller fashion to a number of these other categories as well, some of which relate to special education placements, i.e. the high excess costs and supplemental excess costs. And the others, again, there are certain things that we are saving on now, not by choice, and not because we want to, but because there are certain expenditures that are not being made. So at the end of the day, we are looking at over a 15% reduction in aid as per our projections. I'll stop for a second.
You may have said, but the asterisks indicate what?
That's where 15% was taken from, as compared to the 2021 enacted, and the big chunk is right here.
Great. Jim, I have a question about transportation, so the changes you said are, you know, that number, a million, 82,000, and that's because we're not using buses now, and so some of the money can be brought from this year to next year? Or?
You can't just take, you can't just dump excess money from one year to the next year, that will help you in 2021, but then to make up for that in 2122, we would be destroyed, so we have to do this very carefully. Some of it can be reserved, some of it can be appropriated as fund balance to bring down the tax rate, but we've got to be very careful and calculated in terms of what we do. I will share later with the board some ideas in terms of transportation, but no matter how it's sliced, transportation is not gonna cost as much as it would have in April, May, and June, because we're not using the buses.
Right.
And because it's not costing as much, we don't get as much aid?
That is correct.
What that number is.
Aside from foundation aid, all of these other categories are expense-based, meaning if you don't spend it, you don't get it back during subsequent years.
Yeah.
So it's a double-edged sword, if that's the best way to describe it. We're spending less, but we're also making less the next year back on those expenditures.
Right.
So it helps us right now, it doesn't necessarily help us moving forward.
Two sides of the same coin, I think that's the one thing you need.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim, question on that, are all of those expense-based aids delayed by a full school year? I guess it really doesn't matter, right, as long as it rolls from one school year to the next, when you actually see it, as long as it's within the budget year, it's okay, right?
Yeah, well, the numbers that you see here are the numbers anticipated for 2021. So what you're seeing in terms of, for example, building aid, maybe aid on projects that were completed a couple of years ago. So there is, there are various measurement periods, or a lot of this is the next year you receive, which you spent the previous year, so it's not the same year.
Yeah.
Okay, ready to move?
Ready.
Okay. So this gives you a sense of our various fund and reserve balances as of June 30th, 2018, and June 30th, 2019. Obviously, I can't really predict with a great deal of accuracy where we're gonna land on June 30th, 2020. And you can look at those, and you'll see what we're gonna do with some of that money moving further into the presentation. We do expect that some of our balances may increase, because we do have unspent funds. At the close of this year, there will be things that we don't have to spend on, but obviously, there are things that are going to be shortchanged based on aid shortage moving forward that we can address in part with the funding that's available. Okay, so with that said, in the budget each year, Kathy and I have discussions, we run them by the trustees, and we typically budget formally revenue in the form of reserve use to alleviate some of the expenses in certain categories. So in that second column, you see what's in our budget for this year. We have spent, I'm gonna say, my 10 years here chipping away at the amount of fund balance that we appropriate the next year, because if that is a very high number, it means that you're budgeting too much, and it's obviously something that we don't want, and something that the controller frowns upon very significantly. So Kathy and I had actually put this number in the form of 1.3 million for 2021, back in the happy January days. But now that we are in a different position, and it pains me to do this, but we have to do it, is to up that appropriation to 2 million for 2021. We were trying not to put that in a position where it was so high that we would not be able to make up for it in 2122. The capital reserve, so the first line here, appropriated designated fund balance, that is simply money that will be used to bring down the tax levy in the form of support for our taxpayers. Capital reserve, this is what the board approved on March 9th for capital projects, starting in the summer of 2021. Our employee benefits and accrued liability reserve is gonna carry over, 450, we are allocating to take care of some of those expenses. Notice the increase in ERS reserve contribution. Again, that's to lay some of the costs there and help us not have to increase our expenditures by an unmanageable amount. This year will be the first that we can use the monies that were placed in the TRS, Retirement Contribution Subreserve, which addresses TRS costs. Unemployment, obviously, that was moved up a little bit. Workers' comp, this is based on actuals, and the 700,000 seems reasonable. So the big change here, obviously, in terms of contribution, is in appropriated designated fund balance in the Retirement Contribution Reserve and Subreserve, and that will help us address some of the challenges, or help us address some of the challenges that we face based on the loss of state aid. So if you put it all together, we're looking at about a 1.8 million reduction in state aid overall, and there are a number of other issues that don't contribute as much in terms of our revenue status. We talked about, whoop, I did not do that, did I? Yes, we talked about the state aid, tuition from other districts, that's a reflection of actual, that is primarily in the form of special education costs. The interest income, based on where rates are right now, that 150,000 is about right, it may be even a little short. The other source revenue includes bullet aid, bullet aid receivable, aid in terms of addressing the needs of students in foster care and some special education tuitions. So that's where you see almost $100,000 change there. Designated fund balance, we talked about, and the reserve use is really designed to compensate for the aid that we lost. So you see a $500,000 increase here, primarily from sources other than state aid. It's the reserve use and the designated fund balance. So all of that goes into the proposal that I am about to share here. And I do want to just point out a couple of things that I think are important in terms of where our heads were in planning for this year, and also thinking about moving forward. Two things that were quite important to us, or three things I should say, is obviously, we want to do what this district was designed to do, so the mission, vision, and core beliefs is in there. Our goal was to maintain our K-12 instructional programs. Our goal was to maintain our staff, they're doing phenomenal work. We want to keep people here and doing what they have been doing in terms of supporting our kids. But at the same time, we've got to respond to new fiscal realities, we've got to count for a potentially devastating reduction in state aid, and we've also got to consider how this is going to impact us in the long haul, and that's why we can't take so much money and appropriate it during one year, because there's no way to compensate that for the following year. So that said, starting with this, this is the last slide we showed before the pandemic changes. So this is what our budget looked like on March 23rd. We were about $540,000 away from reaching the tax levy limit. You can see what the draft budget looked like then, at just over 137 million. The revenue certainly looked a lot better then, tax levies is looking a lot higher than it is now. And throughout this presentation, we're, that should be a zero here, we are looking at a flat assessed valuation, and I would recommend keeping that as is, I don't think it's going to make a tremendous difference under the current circumstances, one way or the other. Since that meeting, and over the past couple of weeks, this is what we have done, and I will explain them as best I can. Now, understand that when I would typically make the revenue presentation, I would break out each one of those revenue categories in my typical way, showing 1920 actual, 2021 budget, 1920, I'm sorry, projected, 1819 actual, 2019 projected, then I'd show budget, then the difference in terms of dollar amount percentage, I took all of those slides out, because it just seemed to be unnecessary lengthiness in a presentation, and I think we've seen the summary slide. I did that to a certain degree here, but I'm gonna explain every one of these things and answer any questions you have. The primary reductions here are in the form of salaries, really, there's a small piece of stipends in there, but it's primarily salaries. And what we have done here is we have economized, we did not, I think there was one grade level in one building that experienced on the projected platform, slight increase in class size, none of this impacts class size. We were able to move things around and do that in the form of not replacing retirees and some people who are leaving the district. So that does not reflect anybody being excess, does not reflect anybody being harmed, minus one potentially part-time position. So all employees are maintained in this scenario. But with those people coming out as retirees, or those who will not be rejoining us in the fall, it also reduces our health insurance, it reduces our FICA, it reduces our TRS, and it reduces our ERS expenditures. So all of that kind of goes in a package deal. The BOSI's line, that reflects some reductions based on actuals and projections. Summer school, some pieces of special education and some software, non-expenses there, not a lot of money. There were some increases and decreases, it netted out to a savings of 87,73. Transportation, same thing, based on actual projections and the likelihood that there will be fewer field trips taken next year. I can almost assure that that is a sure thing, not a lot of money taken out for that, but we do anticipate that that's going to be a reality. And then the rest of it, small pieces, you see it all, it totals exactly what was taken out between March 23rd and today, in the form of expenses. Also changed since 3/23, March 23rd, the 15% reduction in state aid, reduction in interest income, and then the reserve contributions that have since gone up. And the additional fund balance that we are contributing, and actually, I think that's off by $100,000 right there, I'm gonna fix that. So the net reduction to the tax levy since March 23rd is over $1 million. So now what we're looking at are the following numbers, the numbers in the 1920 column have not changed, the 2021 proposed is what it is, now, if you recall, back on March 23rd, our budget was over 137 million, it was 137,2 and change. That has come down to below 136 million. Tax levy has been reduced. Tax levy increase no longer at 2.19%, but currently at 1.77%. Budget-to-budget, 184. Tax rate per $100 assessment, 249,99. And because we're leaving the assessed valuation projection as it is, unless the board elects to change that, the tax levy increase, the tax rate increase are on this slide, one and the same. We tried to find a medium here, we tried to find a number that we felt people could live with. We came in with this 177, which is below the prior cost of living for 2019. And when all is said and done, we would end up at $466,249 below the levy limit. And you're gonna find the districts are all over the map here, some can't get anywhere close to this, and some will come in lower. Current proposal, 184, budget-to-budget, 177, tax rate increase, and at the limit, the limit on March 23rd was, I'm sorry, the budget-to-budget on March 23rd was 2.38% in terms of the year-to-year increase. It's down now, because the budget is lower. Just by chance, those two numbers are very similar, tax rate, tax levy, tax rate, and budget-to-budget increase at the levy limit. But the proposal you have in front of you is that middle row. So one of the fears here is that if a budget is voted down, and we've had budgets pass at extraordinarily high rates, but under this process, it's a little bit more of an unknown. If the budget were voted down, we'd have to pull another one point, almost 2 million out of the budget, equipment automatically comes out, it's just under $500,000. We'd still have to find another 1.453 million, and that would And that would be a little bit more painful than, a lot bit more painful than what we've done thus far. This is what it looks like, column by column. On the ballot, there will actually be four different categories or four lines on the ballot. The first proposition will be the 2021 School District Budget. Proposition two, and it's never more important than to explain this out, the capital reserve monies. Recall the series of capital projects that we have on the table for approval. That's Proposition two, that's coming out of money that's in the bank, in the capital reserve, in the capital reserve funds from 2008, 13, 17, et cetera. If that is not approved, that money just goes back in the bank. We cannot by law use it for anything but capital projects. So these projects are going to be more expensive moving forward. If we don't do this, we have things that are not going to get done, needs that have to be addressed in terms of infrastructure, boilers, we have an auditorium in there, et cetera. But these are things that are funded by monies that are already in hand. And just a reminder of the dates of importance here. Budget adoption next Monday, hearing on June 1st, and absentee ballot receipt deadline, June 9th at 5:00 PM. What I will do before I publish the presentation is I'll, I'm going to throw in an extra slide that shows what those capital, reminds people what those capital projects are.
Yeah, that would be good. It seems like such a long time ago. It would be nice to see a list.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's in the, it's in the presentation for March 9th, but I think it would be appropriate to put it back in.
And stress, if you can, again, that they cannot be used beyond any other purposes. I see it right there, but
Yeah.
You know, bold, whatever you can do to really stress that.
We're going to do our best. The communication is, I don't have meetings, I don't have, you know, we're not going to do the same type of mailing in terms of a budget brochure. It's going to be a simple postcard. We'll get some things up on the website, but it's just very important that people understand. And I have a meeting with PTA presidents tomorrow. I'm going to go through this with them as well, answer any questions they have. But it's just important that people understand what everything is here. So that's Proposition one and two. The third item on the ballot will be the Board of Education Trustee Candidates. There are actually four of them. They had until 5:00 PM today to let us know that they were going to be throwing their hat in the ring. And the four candidates, I don't have them on a slide here, but I can certainly identify them. Xavier Palacios, the incumbent, Kelly Donovan, Joe Madio, and Thomas Galvin. And the last item on the ballot will be the library candidate. There's no budget, but the library candidate, I believe, running unopposed. So there'll be four lines on that ballot.
I think word of mouth is going to be as important now as it's ever been because, truthfully, I think if people can just tell their neighbors and their families and their friends that when they get that absentee ballot, take it out, fill it out, and get it in right away so that we can really get the vote out. I think, you know, I think it's just a matter of getting, you know, people to look, you know, to be aware.
Jim, I just think that it's astonishing to me that you came up with a budget that, that's so relatively pain-free.
Well.
Responsible, well, it could be way worse.
Oh, yeah.
But that's so responsible to the taxpayers in this time where people, you know, are uncertain about their financial situations to, you know, not take every penny that was available. And that, you know, leaves our classrooms intact. I just, thank you. It's amazing.
Well, you know, I'm going to go ahead and thank the boards through the years because one of the things that we have been promoting since I got here is low debt level. The districts that are going to feel pain right now are those who just passed bonds because they have debt service that they cannot escape from. And honestly, it's not their fault. It's not their community's fault. The timing is not, not good for those districts. And we have taken a different approach here, and we have chipped away at debt to the point where we have among the lowest levels of debt of any school district. And Moody's is not being very friendly right now to school districts in general, just because of the state of the economy. But, you know, we are in a position to weather this, and not that we're in a good position, and I don't want to profess that in any way, shape, or form, but we are certainly in a relatively decent position when I hear some of the other stories that are out there. And everybody's going to find a way. It's not just, you know, we found in Huntington, other districts will find it in their own way. To us, it was important with the situation we're in to maintain, to make sure that our kids have the opportunities. There may be expenses to help these kids catch up and the remediation, the compensatory services that we have, that we have to take into account in September that aren't even built in here. We need some of that flexibility. I don't know how much we're going to be able to do because this is very lean. And the other piece that was extremely important is I did not want to see good people not here next year.
I agree. Christine, you said it really well. Hats off to you, Jim, and your team. This was a monumental task, and I don't say you made it look easy because I don't want anybody in any way, shape, or form to associate
No, because Kathy, Kathy might jump through the screen.
Like you did. But you guys did, the amount of pain that has rendered from this, like Christine said, was minimized, and all parents in the district appreciate that. You kept your eyes on the prize.
And under tremendous amount of pressure with a very short timeline and with a lot of information missing from the state. So that's an incredible job.
And listen, the one thing we don't know, and I can't tell you right now, is what happens if the state comes in on Friday and throws out, we estimated 20%, what if they, 15%, what if they hit us with 20%?
Yeah.
And that's something that we'll have to basically toss around very quickly. We must adopt on the 18th, so it's not going to give us a great deal of time.
Sounds like you also have built that in a little bit, though, as far as realizing that possibility and knowing that it might be coming and the, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen.
Where the, where the levy falls, you mean? Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
One other thing, Jim, and I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea, but I'm going to throw it out there. I know in the past you've done, you know, various meetings explaining the budget to people, going over the budget, and I don't know if you would consider maybe doing a Zoom information meeting about the budget.
Like a town hall?
Like a town hall type of thing with the amount of people that will be getting ballots. There may be a lot of questions because, you know, some people just, you know, haven't participated in the past that will be participating now.
Can try that. Certainly not going anywhere. So it's, I'm going to be speaking with a bunch of folks tomorrow, but I'm more than happy to do that and probably a good idea to do it more sooner than later.
Good suggestion.
Good one.
And then I know that you've also thought about and, and in your mind at least, taken into consideration the having some flexibility in September, not knowing what rules and restrictions will be thrown at us in the physical building.
I think the powers that be, not that they necessarily, and forgive me, not that they necessarily care, but they do understand that we're going to be, you know, we're, we're in bone, and I don't want to hit the center of the marrow. You know, if we have to start spending hordes on, you know, safety first, EPEs, we've got safety considerations that have to be taken into account here. This is where the push, the continued push for additional federal aid shouldn't, it needs to continue. It should not stop. That's why I shared that information with, with folks a couple of weeks back. We need to keep pushing our local United States reps to advocate on our behalf. And I think that you're doing that. I just don't know how much of an impact it's going to have because the last thing I read, the federal government put a hold on all stimulus relief funding. So right now, we need package number four coming in our direction, particularly if we're going to be spending on things that we would not be spending on outside of a follow-up to a pandemic.
Right.
I have one, I have a comment to make. So I agree with all of the flowery descriptions of your budget. Let me ask the one question that isn't all flowers. As I saw your numbers, it looks like you guys generated about $2.2 million in quote revenue through either additional use of reserves or fund balance, which is what it's for in times like this. Given that there's an idea that this isn't the really bad fiscal year, it very well may be next year when the state has had a whole year of hoopoo economy. How, at the current burn rate that we're on, through either the reserves or the reserve use of fund balance, can we go before we start running out there?
I don't think there's going to be a complete drop-off here because of the funds that are remaining at the end of this year that remain unused.
That's a help for us, yeah.
That is a tremendous
And the fund balance, but what about the reserve side of things?
Well, that, that part of that, part of that fund balance would go into replenishing reserves.
So what do you see? I mean, truthfully, I mean, it could take us a little bit longer than, you know, people are comfortable thinking about to dig out from this. Given that when you start taking recurring funds and pull them out of like savings or fund balance, that it's, you know, you have to have that much plus more the next year. How do you feel for next year's budget is really my, and the year after is really the question I'm going at you?
Well, I think one of the major concerns that we have for the 21, 22 budget that is not as significant for this year is what is our TRS expenditure going to look like? So some of what's left at the end of this year that wasn't spent in the spring must go into that TRS subreserve so that we can address a chunk of those costs. Who knows? They may go up 5%, in terms of a contribution rate. So we need to be prepared to address that. So these are some of the conversations we had in terms of looking. We, starting to think about how to frame this on a slide, there are just so many unknowns that it just seemed arbitrary and capricious to do it that way. But we, we do believe that there will be additional fund balance used to replenish, in some cases, much of what we're applying additionally as revenue for 2021. But there are some unknowns, and TRS is probably one of them. And others, that, other factors that can't be predicted is what we're going to be mandated in terms of additional payments that don't exist right now. So, yeah, I think 21, 22 is probably going to be our deepest hole, our biggest challenge at this point. We will have something there. It's just a matter of how much of a hit it takes. It could be significant. And this is a time where, you know, we're still doing some work in terms of negotiating contracts and, you know, we want, we want people to be in a good place here, but there are a tremendous number of unknowns. State aid is an unknown. TRS is an unknown. How long it's going to take to dig out of this hole is an unknown. This wouldn't be burning for the next two years, as far as we can tell. And I think we'd have to rebuild starting in year three, four, et cetera, assuming that the economy goes back to some semblance of an upswing. And that's all speculative.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for that answer.
Lot of question marks. Okay, um, you know, we've had a lot of comments and questions. Did anybody else have anything else? Because otherwise, we'll go on for a motion in a second.
No, no motion, no second necessary.
Oh, okay. Oh, because we're just right. All right. Very good. Thank you. Anything else, then? All right.
Okay. The draft is attached here. It's a public document, so you can see 30 pages of very small numbers.
Awesome.
The first couple of pages show the major cost centers. So you can see most of it line by line there. And the break, the further breakdown follows that. There's a revenue page, there's, there is a levy limit page, there is a tax rate calculation page, and certainly anybody with questions is welcome to, to reach out to myself or Kathy directly.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the hard work, too. All right, so that brings us
Jen, just, just a reminder that
Yeah.
dependent upon what we, if, what or if we hear this week, that or something similar will be presented to you on the 18th for adoption.
One week from today, correct?
Yep.
Very good.
Jim, with that in mind, let's say we do get the 20%. What do you foresee being the expense, that 5%?
Well, one of, there's a couple of options there, and that, those will be things that we have to discuss. There may be a few more people that we don't replace. There is one piece there that we have in mind, which would take a piece of that. And the other possibility in whoops, all's good. That was my budget book. The other possibility would be to bump up the tax levy, which is not something I'd like to do right now.
The difference in the 20% is another $900,000.
Thank you, Kathy.
Not all.
All right, I'm going to bend down and pick up my book, so when you see my head disappear, that's why.
That's some big book with the clamor it made.
Just to make sure everybody's still awake.
Yeah, we're awake after that. We're awake for sure. Okay, now are we, now we're moving on to our number three item for discussion and action with this, which is NISP's 2021 budgets, slate of officers, and executive committee members. Familiar name on there.
Okay, so there is your resolution?
Okay. Shall I read it? And then we'll get a motion in a second, and then questions. Okay, so, whereas the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association has submitted its proposed 2021 budget and proposed 2021 slate of officers and members of the executive committee for the approval of the members board, member boards, the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education authorizes the district clerk to record the outcome of the votes and notify Nassau Suffolk School Board Association of the results. Be it resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed budget for the 2021 school year as accepted by NISP's executive committee, be and hereby is approved, not approved, okay? Be it further resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed 2021 slate of officers and members of the executive committee as presented by NISP's nominated committee, be and hereby is approved slash not approved. Okay, so can I, so we're just looking for a motion, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve both resolutions.
Thank you. Bill, can I get a second?
Christine.
Christine, very good. Okay, any questions or comments about this?
This, this would be something that you typically do at their annual dinner. They're not having that annual dinner this year, so they've asked us to do it this way. And just to
Very good.
To share what that slate looks like.
Yeah.
This is Nassau and Suffolk.
Is it, um, oh, yeah, okay.
That's Western Suffolk BOSIs.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, very good. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. All right. So that means we are moving on to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, we got all those. So can I get a motion?
Motion for Tom.
I got a motion from Tom and a second from Linda, I believe. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much. Beth? Okay, Jim, to you.
All right, so again, slim pickings here, but I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 5, 8, 16, and 22.
Very good. Okay, so can I get a motion for the personnel items?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, I got Xavier in a second from Linda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. And finally
And just so you know, those are, I think you noticed this, but those are for continuing temporary replacements, extra class coverages, and a couple of recent retirements.
Yeah, I saw that. All right, and finally, to Dr. Acker.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve items, I through M, on this evening's business agenda.
Great. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the business items? Christine, and a second from
Second.
Tom, I hear Tom. Okay, any questions or comments about these items? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed. Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to our second public commentary section. So if anybody
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have to refer to Chris Hunter as Chief Inspector Hunter?
You better.
Actually, we usually Actually, we usually call him Inspector Gadget.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Um, so. Yeah, no, I know. I'm a nursery school teacher. You expect me to break into song every now and again. Um, now we really are to the public commentary section. Gosh, sorry, everyone. Anybody out there?
Hi, I'm Amy Plakta. Can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
I guess I don't have to unmute.
I unmuted myself.
There you go. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Plakta. I have a seventh grader and a 10th grader. Um, I just have a question under where it says salary stipends. Can you define stipends more? Does that include coaches?
There is some flexibility there to reduce in a couple of different areas. And it could, it, it could involve some athletic pieces.
Can I beg to keep the coaches? I can tell you, like, my son was going to be trying out for the Finley tennis team for the first time, was not able to. Um, my daughter is being recruited, hopefully for basketball. And I know a lot of seniors misplaying their senior year. It's a big part of Huntington. We just adore being Blue Devils. And my kids support Blue Devils and they want to keep participating in sports. So I, and we love all the coaches that we have had the pleasure of being part of teams with. So I beg you to maintain the sports program at Huntington.
All right, Mrs. Plakta, let me, let me just clarify one thing for, oh, I'll let you finish first, then I'll, then I'll answer.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. One thing I will say is despite any stipend shifts or reductions, there is not one sport at any level, well, there, there may be something based on enrollment or participation rate, but outside of that, there is no sport that was, that was impacted by this.
Oh, thank God.
You're not. I want to make that clear.
Finally, some good news.
Yeah. If, if there is some, if there is something that is not there, it's either because the, the participation is not there, but there's no, it's, it's not, I would have mentioned this before and I failed to mention one thing that I'm going to add on now. There is no sport that's being, that's being removed as a result of this. And that's why it's important that we don't have to go any further.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your question.
And just, Mrs. Sullivan, I'm going to ask you to hold just for one second. One thing I forgot to mention before in the staffing reductions, there is one move that we made that I forgot to mention. The deans at the intermediate level are going to return to the classroom. So we're going to take the deans from both Woodhull and from Jack Abrams. And both of those staff members are going to return to their respective tenure area classrooms. And it's not something that I am really thrilled to have to do, but at a time like this, when moves need to be made to save people, this basically allows that to happen and fill slots that are, that are generally open at this point. So I should make that clear and I forgot to mention it earlier.
That's backfilling spots from retirements or, or people leaving.
Correct.
Anybody leaving so that they can fill the.
Minus the, the, the health position. Actually, Mr. Watts is a health teacher. He is going to move back into a full-time slot, which is now a part-time position. So that part-time position would not be refilled at this point. And Ms. Rivera, who is the dean at Jack Abrams, is actually filling a slot that's now open because of somebody leaving the district. So it, it is as least impactful as possible. And as I mentioned, one of my, my personnel-related goals here was to make sure that everybody was, was whole and, and was in a good place. And that helped to accomplish that.
People first.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me just write down Mrs. Plakta's name here. And those are the questions that need to be asked because if, if that wasn't asked, I wouldn't have been able to clarify that. And people may have left with the wrong impression.
Yeah, and that can get out there then, that, that way people don't have to stress about that one particular thing in a stressful world. Is there anybody else?
Mrs. Sullivan had her hand up. I'm going to keep scrolling, but go ahead.
Got it. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to hop on and say thank you so much, Mr. Plansky. I've watched you from the time that my two children have been in this district play the most incredible long-form game of chess that I've studied, really. And I'm just, I, I see other districts and what they're going through right now. And I'm just so proud to be a Huntington resident and proud of you as a board and as a superintendent. You're just killing it and I just, I really appreciate it. The other thing I just wanted to say is, you know, I have a, a child at Washington and a child at Finley, and I cannot say enough about the teachers in our district and how amazing they have been, particularly in the primary grades. Just the kindness, the patience, the attention to detail, the, um, just the sense of community and care and concern for the kids has really been, you know, top-notch. So shout out to, to the teachers. They're really, they're holding it down.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At times like this, people's true colors come out and the true colors of, of our staff and our families here in Huntington are, again, I, I wouldn't want to go near anyplace else but here. This, this, this is, this is the place that we all should want to be right now. Thank you all.
Huntington Strong.
Yep. Huntington Proud, Huntington Strong.
No doubt about it. All right. Anybody else out there?
All right, I'm scrolling down.
That's an interesting new noise.
It's my heartbeat.
It's the clicking. It sounds like a heartbeat.
All right, I'm, I'm just afraid I'm missing.
Jim.
I'm afraid I'm missing somebody, so I'm just, I'm going to unmute. So.
Maybe not.
Okay, that didn't.
He muted everybody.
All right, let me, let me try that again.
I forgot.
Okay. That was like a really bad commercial.
Can people unmute themselves if they want to talk?
Let me do.
That was a whole new experience.
Let me do that with a little more guidance here. I'm going to try that unmute all again. If you do not want to make any public comment, please mute yourselves immediately. And anybody that's left, I'll find you. Okay. I did not see anyone?
Someone had a loud keyboard.
A loud keyboard and a commercial.
Yeah, no, we were, sorry, again, stop laughing. Okay.
There are a, as I scroll through, I see a number of, of teachers on here and while I have the opportunity, teachers and staff. And while I have the opportunity, and I know I sound like a broken record, I just would like to say that I, I could not ask to work with a finer group of human beings than the people who are stepping up for our children right now. I just want to make that very, very clear. And I may have to unvideo myself for a second, but just please know that you're all appreciated. And the parents, what you guys have been doing, just keep it up. And I know it hasn't been easy. And we're here for whatever you need and we know that you're there for whatever we need. So thank you all.
Absolutely. Well said. Okay, well, then I guess that's going to bring us to closing remarks by board members. Is there anybody that has anything they want to say? Okay, we're almost there then. I have one quick thing I'm going to say just because I, we don't have very many meetings left. And I had planned to announce this at one of the last meetings that we would be at, which this now is. So just so people know, I don't know if people realize, but I'm not running again. These are going to be my last few meetings. So I have about three meetings left on the Board of Education. And without getting too emotional, I just wanted to let everybody know so that it wouldn't be a surprise when they show up one day and I'm no longer here. But I just, and, and I'll take another time at another place to say what I really feel when I've written it down. But this has been an extraordinary nine years of my life. I think the world of working with all of you. I hope you all know that. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. This is some of the most gratifying work I've ever done. I highly recommend it as a, as a job. And I just want to thank you all for making it such a pleasure. And especially you, Jim. We make a good team and I appreciate all of your everything.
We're not done with you yet.
No, you're just about done with me though, aren't you? Okay, and on that note, what I'd like to do is move to our executive session. So I'm going to look for a vote to go into exec. I mean, a motion to go into exec, sorry.
Motion.
Motion, Xavier.
And second from Tom. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?